Roll call.
Mr. Fritz?
Here.
Mrs. Gates?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner?
Here.
We've asked Chris Bishop to lead us in the pledge line.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes, DPS and LCSEA treasures report, and DPS monthly bills, the balance sheet and monthly expense report, the monthly website and social media activity, and the fuel purchase, which were included in your packet.
Second.
The only thing different this month is it's one where we have a fuel purchase. Was there anything unusual to note it?
No, there's nothing unusual to note about the fuel purchase. However, I'll remember you have both June and July reports, because we did not have a meeting in June where you would have only seen June. Also, remember, June reports are unaudited at this point. So, once the auditors come in and we do a series of closing entries, for example, the balance sheet and some of the other reports would technically be different at that time. We did have some issues, so if you are missing a report or something. We did have some tech issues with our service provider of our financial package. Nothing that we did. They had to go in and rewrite some code. So, if you feel like there's something you want a fresh copy of or is missing or something, happy to provide it at a later time.
Are there any comments or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
I don't believe there was anybody on the citizens' agenda. But I have correspondence. Do you have any, Margot?
I have no correspondence.
We received a very nice card and note from the Natchoozeau Grasslands Committee, or Friends of Natchoozeau Grasslands. Dear Dixon Public School Board of Education, thank you for your donation to Friends of Natchoozeau Grasslands. Your support is vital to our mission of preserving and advancing this tall grass prairie ecosystem. We enjoyed hosting you at our headquarters barn and hope the expansive prairie views from our windows created a relaxing atmosphere for our retreat in July. Both of our organizations value education, and we hope the concluding guided tour was informative, providing a deeper understanding and appreciation of the wonders of Natchoozeau Grasslands. Sincerely, Mary Coleman, four Friends of Natchoozeau Grasslands. And I believe Mary is a former teacher of the district. That was really a wonderful place to go. I appreciate whoever set that up, and I hope we use it. I'd like to see the kids going out there and using the wonderful opportunities that are out there for education. We'll move on unless anybody has anything else to add. Move on to action items. We need a motion that the board establish the fiscal year 2026 budget hearing as presented.
So moved.
Second.
As you know, the budget process is a prescribed process by the legislature. Step number one is to create a budget hearing or establish that date, which we have set. We'll ask you to approve here in a few minutes for the next board education meeting. At that time, then, the budget will go on display for 30 days. It's already been posted to the website, and a variety of other tasks will actually take place as well. There will be notice put in the paper, things like that. I did notice there is a small typo on the notice. I've already fixed it on the one. I'm going to send it to the papers. I do apologize for that. However, I also, at this time, I wanted to take just a few minutes to give you a short summary of the budget, which is at your tables. You'll see it. You have it there. I also provided for you three other documents. One is a memorandum that gives you some highlights, which I'll go through in a minute. And then, there's a couple of graphs that I'd like to talk about also as well. Next month, when we actually do the hearing, there will be a full presentation with more detail and explanation and so forth. But as a starting point, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of a few things. Last two months ago, when we did the amended budget, I did for you a SWOT analysis that identified a series of threats. Unfortunately, many of those threats haven't actually taken place, and we are now working through those details, let's just say. This budget has a $1.6 million deficit. I would say that the salaries, especially in the Ed Fund, are pretty heavily stated. I don't want to have them come back and all of a sudden I'm understating those. And our representation of the revenues are pretty conservative as well, given some of those threats that have taken place. CPRT funding and evidence-based funding increased by 2% this year. And I can assure you, there is not a single expense that we will experience from last year to this year that isn't more than 2%. So, those funding streams, which are the two biggest ones from the state, are actually losing ground to a certain extent. Title and IDEA grants, last year as an unaudited number within the system, were about $2.1 million. I will tell you, that's actually short of some of the receipts that we actually received in FY '26 that associate back to that, so they were probably closer to $2.5 million. And right now, this budget is sitting at about $1.8. So, while there was an explanation of level funding for IDEA and title, I wouldn't 100% agree with that. There will be a reallocation at a later time. We'll get some additional funding. But I think it's a little bit of a stretch to think it's going to be 100% in level. ASR funding last year was $4.2 million, and that is a revenue stream that is wrong. So, as you compare, if you were to compare year-over-year revenues to budget amounts, which will be part of the presentation next month, $4.2 million right off the top is wrong, as we look at this year. As you know, some of those threats were tuition reimbursement for our outplaced students. We are anticipating that revenue stream to drop down to a 40% reimbursement. So, that's a pretty significant hit to the budget for the number of students that we have outplaced and hopefully pay for them. As well as, we haven't received the final numbers, but we are anticipating transportation reimbursement to drop down into 60%. And when we say 60%, it's never 60% of 100%. It's actually 60% of 80%. That's the state math that they do. So, anyway, the last comment that I'd like to make in regard to the budget is we are expecting the next three to four years of level funding. So, we cannot necessarily anticipate, other than local sources, for there to be any increase year-over-year in the next upcoming years. So, with that being said, Margot and I will be meeting monthly to review expenditures, especially in relation to the budget. We'll be working closely on a monthly basis with principals, directors, to review and continue to develop 10-year plans, which we still need in place. Just because money's going to be tight, that doesn't mean that we don't work towards continued improvement. And then, finally, we'll be looking closely at staffing and other types of programs. But as part of the overall process, what we really want to be focused on is quality programming across whatever department that is: quality technology, quality facilities, quality curriculum, quality education, quality teaching, in the light of budget constraints, prioritizing what those things are and developing the budget that will ultimately be balanced over the next few years. The budget that you do see in front of you is not a balanced budget, as I said, but it does not require a deficit reduction plan. Again, that is a result of the good work that we've done over the last few years in establishing larger cash reserves. But it doesn't mean that those cash reserves will last forever. One of the big things that we did want to talk to you about tonight is you actually have two different graphs in front of you. This graph here, and this is maybe a funny statement, but the top graph and the bottom graph are actually the same graph. They provide a representation of the same data with one exception. The graph on the bottom gives you year after year after year data point. The graph on the top just does a straight line. Here's where it was in 2016. Here's where it is in 2024. But this graph represents, the orange line represents a decline in our enrollment. That decline, as you can see, is about 13.8%. That doesn't include FY '25, so this is as of the end last year. However, as you can see, our staffing only went down by about 1.8%. So, again, and that varies and fluctuates throughout the years. That is not to say necessarily that the two should be going exactly the same. That's not necessarily the case. But again, as we start talking about budget constraints, we want you to have a total picture of what it is we are looking at. This graph provides a similar type of piece of data in a different format. What these school districts represent are our, let's call them equals, schools that have similar enrollment size and have similar percentage percentages. And the vertical line going through all of the bar lines is the average ratio of teachers to students. So, as you can see, that average is 15.7. If you look at Dixon, Dixon is sitting there kind of in the middle. Wow, we're like number eight from the top. We're pretty much right on that average. So, where we have, we have said we don't believe that we are overly staffed. This data actually shows us in relation to a lot of districts, does that mean true? Whereas, some districts are far below, but there are other districts that are far above this line or this median line. Now, there are places within the district that might be over or understaffed that we have to address. And we'll be dissecting that data at a later time, again, as we start evaluating our staffing and really looking for that overall quality program that we're looking for. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, with the change in enrollment of 13 or 14% less students, but only 2% less staff, that's kind of what I'm seeing as compared to 10 years ago?
I would also argue that it's not a straight-up math number. And what I mean by that is you can't just say, "Oh, we have 200 kids, so we need eight teachers," and that's 25 in class.
Right.
It's about the need. It's about what are the ratios and the needs of the children that give us the ability to provide what they need? And that's what we need to dissect. It's easy to throw a bunch of kids in a classroom and start balancing the budget that way. I have said to Margot, "You don't want me to balance the budget," because that's the business manager balancing the budget. You want our administrative team working closely with our teachers to determine need, to determine the programs that are giving us the greatest value and the greatest rate of success for our children. Yes, we have budget constraints, and we're going to have to battle through that. And as much as I would love to say everybody can have everything, not everybody's going to get everything. We're not going to be able to do that. The last five years, six years, it's been great. And we should cherish those years as a timeframe where we got to do a lot of great things. And we did not overextend ourselves. We just need to now start planning and tightening.
Are there other questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Gates? Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the second reading of board policies as presented in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
First read was way back in June. And just as a reminder, all of these policies revolve around basically two specific changes. Number one, the 2024 Title IX regulations were struck down, and the 2020 regulations were reinstated. And so, putting the wording back to the 2020. And the second major set of changes was, as a reminder, effective July 1 of 2025, there's the Ensuring Success in School, the ESS. And it provides protections for students who are parents, expected parents, or who have been victims of domestic or sexual violence. And things that we need to make sure are available to them, from programming to services and supports. So, we have not had any changes, anyone reach out since the June board meetings, and my recommendation is to approve as soon.
So, we had to remove some LGBTQ language from Title IX as it was stated and revert back to 2020's language.
Correct.
But we still have to protect LGBTQ students and staff from discrimination and bullying. And in Illinois, we still have the Illinois Human Rights Act that does that. So, I just want people to know, our kids are safe, our staff is safe, and I live in Illinois.
All of our kids and our staff are safe, no matter what. So, that's a point to drive home.
Right.
That's what we want.
Any questions on policy? Roll call.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the the updated 2526 substitute teacher rates that were presented.
So moved.
One of those numbers that we didn't catch in June when they were approved was that those that are hard to fill, they were at a lower rate than our full-time subs and that. So, we needed to equalize those, because those are certainly important people who come in and work for us. So, we needed to move them up to the $240 a day, just like the permanent subs.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the music therapy agreement for Dempsey Day School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We are lucky that we actually had music therapy start out at Dempsey last year at semester?
Yes.
Yes, at semester, to provide our kiddos out there some music therapy. Went exceedingly well. We learned about Kirsty Ray Knowles and her music therapy as she worked for Lee County. And so, we inquired with her, since it was such a success. And we want to make sure that we have the FDPs, making sure those kids get all the offerings that any other students do in our buildings. And so, she is going to start music therapy services at Dempsey for the entire year, starting this year.
Any questions? That sounds great. Roll call.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the board legacy statements that we edited at our board retreat.
Thank goodness for Mrs. Wagner, because I still have not found her notes from the retreat. I do not know where they went. But as she provided me her notes, I was able to start filling in and then remembering our discussion during the retreat. So, I want you to take a quick look at these, because again, if there's something that needs to be changed or you felt or you recalled something different from our retreat, now is the time that we can change it and then approve it at the end. But I believe that what I have down captures what I remembered from our discussion. And actually, I was having trouble with numbering, but number six is out there, so we end up only having eight moving forward, so.
So, you did eliminate number six?
We did.
I think that's what we had talked about.
It was being difficult, and the numbers wouldn't change, so eventually I just gave up and thought, "We'll get that rectified when the final result comes out."
And I just saw a couple just typos or something.
Can we point those, so I can make sure that we get them?
In number three, the word power, O-U-R, doesn't need to be there, does it?
It is crossed out.
Oh, it is?
The first hour?
It is crossed out.
Oh, okay. First hour is crossed out.
Okay, I must have been looking at something else. And I thought hiring the superintendent was a separate one at the end, but I guess it doesn't matter.
Number, what would be number eight at the bottom there in red, "Hire a new superintendent who will partner with us to do all of the above while establishing a calm, caring climate in the district."
Okay.
That would be actually number eight. It looks like number nine, but.
Okay, yeah, that's. Any other comments, edits?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Washington School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry. As you know, in June, we did the districts, and we did Washington, or I'm sorry, Jefferson and Madison's, because they have been on the improvement list for the state. So, this month is the remaining four buildings that we have. Based on, they took the district goals and adapted them for the activities that will be done at their buildings. Anything to add, since we're at Washington, Mrs. Wagner?
Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Reagan Middle School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Again, Reagan started with the basis of the district goals and then put the specific activities. Mr. Magnifici, is there anything you needed to add on yours?
Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Dixon High School that we received.
Second.
Again? Still got one more to go before this? Dixon High School started with the goal goals and then put it into the actions that they will be doing. And Mr. Schaefer, anything to add there?
Roll call.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Dempsey Therapeutic Day School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Dempsey, as you will see, is just a little bit different, because they utilize the information from their home schools that the kids, you know, our goal is to eventually have them integrated back into their home schools. The last year, being a brand-new school, one of the things that I tasked Mrs. Huffman with was taking a look at what our school improvement plans were, how they did, and to think about what are her goals for her staff and her kiddos. So, she came in. Again, they're around the same general topics that we have: the English Language Arts, the math, the socially-emotional, and that. And I think she did just a great job of, while the kids are at the Thomas J. Dempsey Therapeutic Day School, what are we hoping that those staff and those kids achieve? And I think she's done a great job with that. Anything to add for yours?
No, other than we have, we are successfully transitioning one of our students back to Washington School. She's doing a phenomenal job, so.
Her success.
Wow.
They're all successful, but the goal is to eventually get them back, like Janine said, to their home buildings. And the plan was put in place last year, and she started on day one transitioning back to Washington. And she got on the bus today. I had the privilege of driving her for the first four days, because we didn't have a bus ready. It was the highlight of my first four days. And she was just so excited, and I credit both teams at TJD and at Washington for preparing this kiddo from day one. They made sure everything was in place for her to be successful, and I think she was having a great time getting ready to go back.
Well, good. Sometimes programs say they're going to do that, but it never really happens. And so, I really like to see that. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
And we need a motion that the board approve the handbook for Dempsey Day School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
This was inadvertently left off in June when you were approving the other handbooks, so I wanted to get it in. Janine follows very similarly. Again, the handbooks that we see at the building level, while acknowledging the nuances and the things that they have out at the Dempsey Day Schools, so.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the settlement agreement resolving special education due process case for student 6262.
So moved.
Second.
There have been no changes. It's our original discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. Wattsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We move on to information items and administrative reports.
Yeah, looking at your business report, a couple of items to just kind of bring to your attention. I did want to let you know that we received a grant. Kevin worked with our HVAC provider, and we received a grant to help with the cost of replacing one of our air conditioning units on top of Reagan. So, that was nice. It's about $10,000 savings, so that makes a difference. It a little bit helps. I make a reference there to evidence-based funding. If you remember, I told you that one of the threats to evidence-based funding was that the Chicago Public Schools would move from Tier 2 back to Tier 1. Just as a general explanation of evidence-based funding, we are in Tier 2. Tier 1 schools have the least amount of local capacity.
Roll call. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Albon Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Albon Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Reagan Middle School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There have been no changes since our original discussion.
Roll call. Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Albon Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Dixon High School that we received. Second.
Again? Still got work to go with this.
Any questions?
Dixon High School started with the goal goals and then put it into the actions that they will be doing. And Mr. Schaefer, anything to add there?
Roll call. Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Albon Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Dempsey Therapeutic Day School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
This was inadvertently left off in June when you were approving the other handbooks, so I wanted to get it in. Ginny and Fallows very similarly, again, the handbooks that we see at the building level while acknowledging the nuances and the things that they have out at the Dempsey Day Schools, so.
Any questions? Roll call. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Dempsey Day School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
This was inadvertently left off in June when you were approving the other handbooks, so I wanted to get it in. Ginny and Fallows very similarly, again, the handbooks that we see at the building level while acknowledging the nuances and the things that they have out at the Dempsey Day Schools, so.
Any questions? Roll call. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Albon Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
And we need a motion that the board approve the handbook for Dempsey Day School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
This was inadvertently left off in June when you were approving the other handbooks, so I wanted to get it in. Ginny and Fallows very similarly, again, the handbooks that we see at the building level while acknowledging the nuances and the things that they have out at the Dempsey Day Schools, so.
Any questions? Roll call. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Albon Parks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the settlement agreement resolving special education due process case for student 62-62. So moved. Second.
There have been no changes since our original discussion.
Roll call. Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Albon Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Albon Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the school improvement plan for Dempsey Day School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There have been no changes since our original discussion.
So a few months ago, you probably remember us talking about copiers, doing copiers and doing an RFP. And Jim Manley and I worked on this. Jim really took point. We had a small team of people, Rachel and a couple of the other tech people actually visited some of the different vendors and looked at the equipment, things like that. As we went through the process, we got delayed because of the timing of our current Xerox lease, technically ends October 30th. That's kind of a long story, so I don't want to get into that. But what we'll be doing now is I provided for you a copy of the copier contract and a summary of the different things that we went through as far as comparing different costs, comparing service, preparing the tech teams and so forth. Our recommendation will be to work with Marco. Marco is a provider of Sharp. We currently, like I said, have Xerox, but they provide Sharp equipment. They have numerous contracts, not just through north in the northwest region, but all through the suburbs and numerous school districts that they provide copier service for. So we're very confident in their ability to provide quality service as well as machines that are going to work well for us. This will be a, this will be an action item for you next month. We wanted to bring it to your attention. If you have any questions, anything? Just kind of hoping we end up with a local vendor. Marco's out of?
Rockford.
Rockford. Make sure you don't overlook.
Next up, summer school reports.
Okay, put your tables and copy of the breakdown of how our summer school laid out, the students attended and completed summer school successfully. And I'm going to briefly go over each one of these and then give you four observations at the end. For K-5, we had 113 students sign up. 103 actually attended with 33 of those being required to attend summer school of the 33. 31 successfully completed the program. Daily attendance rate was 87%. For the, for the middle school, we had six teachers actually provide direct instruction for math, ELA, science, and social studies, and they had 34 students required to attend. And they had 32 of their students successfully complete the program as well. They also had an additional nine students who were invited to participate in the skills-based summer school, and that was foundational math and reading skills. And then for the high school, the counselors and administration identified 36 kids who would benefit from the online credit recovery courses that we offered during summer school. We had 31 students enrolled for that. 93 courses completed. 30 of the students completed the list one course and 23 completed the assigned courses. Their daily attendance rate was 92%. So just in some quick observations, number one, those attendance rates of 87% at the K-5, 93, middle school is the winner, 93 daily attendance rate, and 93% of that, 92% at the high school. If we had that all year round, I think we'd have some real happy administrators and teachers about to be able to take it for a month of summer as well. Second, like I said, there was 113 K-5 kids enrolled. In 2022, we had 146 enrolled. In 2023 and 2024, we had 152 enrolled each year. So we had a nice drop in the number of kids that were enrolled in summer school, and that brings me to the third point. 33 of the students were required to attend summer school. Last year was the first year that we made it mandatory for kids to attend, and we had, based on those two criteria that you see above, last year we had 67 that were required to attend summer school. So to go from 67 being required to attend down to 33, that's, that's a nice drop, and that's an evidence of our staff doing what they need to do to get our kids to grow to where they need to be. And then finally, 70 kids, K-5, their parents somehow convinced them that, yeah, you're not required to be in summer school, but we want you to go and you're going to miss June, but you're going to go learn anyway. So bravo to our parents and also to our Title I teachers for reaching out to all those parents and convincing them that this would be a good thing. So do you have any questions for me?
So this is paid with Title I money?
Title I money, yes.
Is it in jeopardy? Is it in jeopardy for next year?
Well, Mark says, if it's a program that's working, we'll find a way. That's a quote.
Oh, I know, okay. But our usual revenue source might not be available? So Doug is correct. I mean, I do strongly believe that. And we have, I mean, this is the kind of data that we need to say, this is a successful program. And when we have a successful program, we've got to find ways to fund it. Title I does not have any money for summer school. That doesn't mean that those monies are not in the budget in front of you, because they are, but it's also in there and it's a deficit budget. So we have to start asking ourselves the question of, all right, well, let's put things on a list, and where does it fall on the list? And what are some of the other things that we might not be able to do or get if we want to do this well? And those are the type of things that I will be dissecting over the next couple of months. But in answer to your question, no, Title I no longer supports this process. This is, yeah, this seems like absolutely necessary. And kudos to everybody who worked on it and made it a success this year.
Next, I'd like to bring up Mandy Dallas and Heely Rowley and Carrie Ramirez, the dream team for Tools for School. So I asked them to come up and give kind of a summary of the great work that culminates on one day that takes all year to get done.
Yes. Tools for School, as you know, is a program that provides backpacks and school supplies for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. However, we don't stand at the door and check, do you qualify for free and reduced lunch? We don't turn anybody away. We know we had people from Oregon and Rock Falls and AFC that came to Tools for School, and we figure if they're at the door, they need help, so we're going to give it to them. Tools for School runs solely off of donations from our community. So all the money to purchase the items for Tools for School comes from our community. We do start in January and we send out letters to our community asking for monetary donations. A lot of businesses have started doing drives, like Org Warner does just strictly a backpack drive for us. Donaldson's did a drive this year and had a lot of school supplies. We put containers out at Midland State Bank, Stock Valley Bank, YMCA, and Phirology downtown. They get a huge amount of donations, so it's really nice. So then we go and collect everything. So as Marco said, Tools for School is an all-year thing. We don't just start when it gets close to the school year. It takes us all year. We take donations all year as well. You'll see the numbers in front of you. The total number of backpacks and supplies we gave out this year was 580. That's 100 less than last year, which is positive for our community, that 100 less students needed our help this year. You'll see that boys and girls were equal, the amount of boys and girls we had come through. We did a sensory time this year. It was a half-hour time. We learned a lot. We know what to do differently next year, but we did have 31 students in our community utilize that time to get their backpack and supplies when the resources were not in there. So it was just us and we had a few volunteers that were handing out supplies, so it was very quiet in there. You can see the first hour is always the busiest, busiest hour. We had people lined up at 7:30.
All the way out to the road.
Yes. Yes. And so it's very, very chaotic. There's no other way to describe it, but I feel like we have a really good system in place to get families in the door and then out the other door. So 279 the first hour, it was a lot. And then we kind of just dropped off and we kept just a steady rate of students. You can see from 10 to 11 was 71, 11 to 12 was 34, 12 to 1 was 25. In the evening hours from 4 to 5, we don't have as many resources come back for the evening time, some of them do, but we have our most obviously from 4 to 5. We have 109 families come through. From 5 to 6, we had 28. You can see the breakdown by grade level. This year, we did keep track of kindergarten, first grade, second grade with a little slip, so families gave their slip to their shopper that was helping them shop so we could better plan for the amount of students that we have. The number of high school students coming to Tools for School is increasing, and we want to make sure we have enough supplies for them to at least get their school year started. We had 29, or excuse me, 27 resources from our community that set up a table there for families to go through and get information from. Some have games, some have candy. Summer eats is always the, at the end, and they give away food and snacks from their summer eats program, always a really big hit. Lee County Health Department did 19 physicals and 10 immunizations, so that was a physical every 20 minutes, which is pretty impressive. Free haircuts is always a hot item. This year, we did 48 haircuts. And I cannot, I have to share a story. I got a text message that evening, and it was from a parent that just kept saying, how her daughter kept saying how beautiful she feels and how she was, it makes me emotional because this is why we do what we do. And she got to pick out her backpack, and she was so happy that she got to pick out her backpack. So that student right there, we know was going to be successful because she felt so good about herself. We had a family that was driving away in their van, and they rolled down the window and the little girl said, "I love my backpack." And that, we literally were like, we look at each other and we say, this is why we do what we do. So Heely and Carrie are a huge part of Tools for School. They do a lot of behind-the-scenes work that people don't see or recognize, but they do a ton of work as well. Steve James from the district office, bless his heart, he was a huge help to me this year He was a huge help to me this year with loading things from Walmart, going back to Walmart when I had some little hurdles that we had to get through. And then Dustin and Steve also took everything out to Dempsey where I store things for next year. So we had a really good turnout. We hear a lot of positive as families come through, very appreciative of the program and helping their families, so. Thank you. We had board members that came this year, so it's nice, if you don't know what it looks like, it's nice to see it in action. We can describe it, but when you actually see what it looks like and a family comes through and the way they stop and they exit is pretty impressive, so.
Well, you have it set up so well, so organized. And adding the resources, was last year the first year you did that?
No, we've done it for two years now and we've added more resources.
Go through and get their supplies and haircut or whatever they're going to get. But on their way out, they have to go through the tables of resources that are set up and all the community resources that you talked about in Community Engagement Committee. I mean, they all have tables and people spend a lot of time. Well, there's a lot of freebies, you know, and stuff, but they spend a lot of time looking at what's on the tables and they get lunch at the end.
Yes.
It's sort of ice.
We do have a Facebook page, if you're on social media. We do a lot of sharing of pictures and things from the event, but we also supply just resources for our families throughout the year of, here's the food pantry, or here's, you know, something going on that you can take your kids to that's free. So we try to provide the families that we know are using Tools for School with things for their kids and their families to utilize.
And, you know, Goodfellows is one organization. I mean, they help at Christmas time, but they have all this stuff all year. Clothes, coats, boots, snow pants. So we try to make sure that teachers know and counselors know that if a family is in need throughout the year, they can call Goodfellows and she'll go in and let them go through.
Correct.
If there's a fire, you know, we've had those kind of things happen. So those resources are available. I was impressed with the student helpers, the impact students.
They were amazing.
And it's so good for them too to see what's going on and to be helping, but there were a lot of them.
We had a lot of impact workers help the day before too. They worked very hard prepping everything, organizing. They did whatever we asked them to.
And they got it done very quickly.
Yes.
Very efficient.
Well, there's a lot of work that you have to do ahead of time, just sorting. Sorting the supplies are all sorted by grades.
Well, that, we get donations and we have to sort them, we have to sort the donations first. And then we sort them by supply. And then we sort them by, then we go through and we have to fill bags by grade level.
So they walk over to the table and say, third grade, and they get their bag of what's on the sheet for third grade. I mean, that's pretty amazing. You know, who doesn't like to be prepared? I remember my girls sitting there spreading their stuff all out, you know, before school starts. And it's just, kids are so happy when they're leaving, you know. We're lucky this community helps.
Yes.
We were talking, Linda and I were talking to some people afterwards and we don't think there's a program in Davenport. Did one of your friends say, there's nothing in Davenport, nothing in Sterling, nothing in Rock Falls.
The ROE helps out with a lot of.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yes.
And then sometimes churches do, but I mean, to have a community like this, first of all, to have you volunteers that want to do this. And then have a community that gives so freely, we're very lucky. So it's another reason why we need to shop local. We need to support these businesses and besides the one percent sales tax that we get. But, you know, we need to let them know that, I think Shoe Sensation, can you tell us some of the companies, or you said Donaldson and Ork Warner, right?
Yes.
But what are some of the Walmarts? I mean, they give us a deal, you buy it, but don't they offer?
Ken Nelson, Majewski, Q-ness, Q-ness, I have them all on my phone. A lot.
Right, that's what I wanted to know. We need to really support those local businesses that support us.
So we do shout-outs on our Facebook page, so.
Okay.
And we try and tag them if they have a Facebook page or social media. So other people know, this is their page, go there for more information, go there and support them. What they're doing on. So we try and get that. So everyone knows who is supporting and maybe they're like, oh, you want to support too.
Yeah.
The Vintners have been around for a long time. They do backpack, like a bike run and they collect backpacks and supplies for us as well.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Their social media presence is big because I had done the grandy tour rummage sales and a woman tracked me down who had been looking for school supplies that were either brand new or gently used through the rummage sales, as well as things that she had picked up, found me, saw me Friday, came back and found me Saturday and delivered a whole bag of things. So your social media presence is hidden out there too.
Yes, yeah. We've done a giveaway, like to get more likes. We've done a giveaway, Discover Dixon donated a little basket for us. So we were able to do a giveaway just to get more views.
Gracie, the running store.
Yes.
She's going to start saving the best gently-used running shoes that are turned into her. She said some of them are not worth it and she sends them off to be recycled. They take them all apart and use them again. But she said she's going to start saving out the best ones. She and I are going to work a deal and I'll clean them all up and get them ready. I mean, you know, you run in your shoes for a year, but they're not falling apart usually. So if they're not ripped and the soles are good, we're going to work something out too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do you guys know if those blue Ardal socks are still there? No, I just thought a boy wanted them. He, oh, he wanted them.
I know, so I think it was just plain colored socks.
He wanted those socks.
And yeah, who doesn't like a new pair of socks? So was, were those from Shoe Sensation or through Goodfellows?
Yes.
Shoe Sensation ran a deal where if you bought shoes, then you donated a pair of, then they would donate a pair of socks or something.
Yes.
And so Goodfellows had bags and bags of, I'm glad they shared them with Tools for School.
Yes.
We don't need that many at Christmas. Very good, thanks a lot.
Oh, and one more thank you. Vanessa keeps track of all of our donations. So she emails us every time we get a check, sends it to us and then we post it on our social media. So she keeps track of that for us, so we're very.
Yes, thank you.
Good start though.
Thank you.
In your packet, first day registration numbers for two thousand and four, two thousand and five in comparison to this year. In your packet, we are down one hundred and forty students from last year. Tomorrow is our seventh day numbers because we see kids enrolling end of last week. I know we've had them up in our office even this week. So we will hopefully have some updated numbers. But when you talk about enrollment decreases and that's what we saw just from last year to this year, so. Finally, I'd like to have Mr. Magna Bischi and Mr. Bishop come in, come up please. And they're going to talk to you about the America Two Hundred and Fiftyth Celebration coming up.
Thanks for having us tonight. I'm supposed to be at two meetings at once, but I'm here. The Park District actually has a meeting going on right now in reference to this. Hopefully things get passed. We're working on a grant that's going to hopefully benefit everybody in this room and the whole community. We're really just building up a partnership between all the entities we define inside the community to celebrate America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday. So Discover Dixon is a part of it. They're letting us use their building for meetings. We're bringing people in. And really all we're trying to do is make sure we're making this special and seeing what ways we can kind of celebrate, obviously, our nation. There are two different entities that are kind of pushing this. One on a federal level, there is an organization there that's pushing that. Illinois itself has its own chapter, which is illinoistwo fifty dot org. We've met with those representatives. We focused down the Illinois one, obviously since it's a little bit more local to us. And their priorities for their committee for the state of Illinois are youth engagement, promoting local ceremonies or commemorations, uplifting local stories and places and recognizing service. And so that's kind of where the goals or what they're looking into to do for the state. And so we've taken that in our community and say, okay, what can we do? And we're putting pieces together. Like I said, the grant right now, working with the Park District, that deals with some land that's around the new bridge that's coming in. We're going to have a commemoration or dedication of the bridge on July fourth next year. So then it's going through and finding the different partners of who wants to get involved and what role can each person play and each organization play. So we're coming to the school and just saying, here's some suggestions of things that have been talked about. It's really more of a brainstorm. I will tell you, obviously, with the bridge dedication, Dixon High School, no matter where that dedication is on the riverfront, that building is going to be the backdrop. It has to be because it's right there. So obviously, we want you informed, let you know what's going on, welcome everyone to come. And then make sure that we're telling you about committee ideas. And once again, we want your ideas. And the one thing I've learned in the time of all the different things I've been in charge of is when someone has an idea and they have the means or an organization that can do something, just ask them, what do you think you can do? And here's some simple ideas that some folks on the committee have brought up. One simple thing for me being a teacher and involved in the school is, can we ask schools to try to, if they're doing projects, to try to come in that theme of Americana, USA, the Constitution, any of those things? Just promote those if we have an opportunity to do so. No one's asking anyone to change curriculum by any means, but if you have the opportunity to maybe push on a US-themed project or an idea, we'd like to see that hopefully this year or even with feelings of what's liberty mean to you? What's the Declaration mean to you? What's progress mean to you? Those are kinds of the things that we're just thinking that might be helpful as we go forward. Matt's going to talk a little bit about the next possible idea where we could showcase.
Yeah, it's like, you know, between you and Dixon, you know, our grounds are utilized for many different things. So what connections can we make in our community? How can we get some of our kiddos involved? Pancake breakfast is a really huge hit. It's well-attended every day. So, you know, it's also a good opportunity to bring people, you know, not only to have a good breakfast, but maybe in our building. So do we have students make placemats that are at the tables when they're eating breakfast? Or are there different artwork that we can display in the cafeteria when people are in there eating? Maybe, you know, if we could work something out, kind of highlight some of the things, the upgrades of Dixon High School, if we open some of the hallways and let people look into the new, you know, the ag room, the tech wing and things like that. But really, I think we want to talk to the principals and some of the clubs and choir students. How can we get kids involved or home in the area during this event?
Next part is just, I already brought up Dixon High School. The possibility of doing some things, just decorating the outside of that, knowing that something along those lines when the dedication happens. Trying to make that a little bit special. I'll just tell you right now, there's a, the grant that I talked about earlier, there are some decorations that we've put in there for, hopefully, we win them and then we can give them to the school district in which they can dress up Dixon High School. So we've already made a little bit of provision of that, if you'd like them. We'll see where that ends up. We've got a little bit of time before we'll know that. But the idea of, hey, it's our two-fiftieth anniversary. Obviously, I keep bringing up Dixon High School because it's going to be around where some of the ceremonies are going to happen. So try to dress that up a little bit, just be cognizant of what's there. And obviously, we've worked with Jared and we've worked with Kevin on figuring out what works for everybody there. And then would you want to kind of hit the last piece of this?
With the band?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, as we roll out of plans, I think it would be awesome. Our band and choral programs are huge and they're a big hit and well-supported in the community. So we have some ideas for the celebration to have, you know, maybe some district band kids coming along the riverfront and playing some patriotic music or having our choral kids singing some patriotic songs. Really just showcasing what we're doing in our buildings and how awesome our programs are, so.
But once again, this is an initiative that's federal to state and it's a year long. Actually, it's technically after July fifth, they started. And actually, some started before the year that. So we're just getting in line, trying to create our own thing, making sure we're commemorating that in our community. So with that, I mean, does anybody have any questions for us? Anything they've been on? Yes.
Along that idea of decorating the buildings?
Yeah.
I've been requesting new art, not that we don't love this art, but I think it's been here for at least six years since I've been here. I would love to see some of that Americana and all of the representing our dependents.
Here's the place.
Any of these teachers want to do those projects with their kids?
I'd, I'd.
We would love to have some new stuff up here.
Awesome.
And again, we love the art that's here. We don't want to say anything about that. The kids have done some wonderful work up here, but this would be a great.
Yeah, absolutely.
We meet monthly or have about every.
Bimonthly, yeah.
Bimonthly. So, you know, if there are some other suggestions that you have or ways that you think that we could involve not only our kids but our community, let us know and we'll take those to the meeting and get working on it.
I go to the PRC meeting, you know, which teachers from each building are there represented? So we want to pass some of these ideas.
Yeah, absolutely. And there's, the great thing about this whole thing is the more people get involved, the more ideas that come along and the better things keep getting. So everybody's open to all suggestions and we're just trying to put all those pieces together and make them work the best we can, so.
See, you know, it's motivating for students to be part of something like this. So I would think some teachers would want to think about that.
Going to plant a bug with our new ag teacher. As you know, they always do the spring plantings that they sell to our community and that. Maybe we can get them to do some red, white and blue plantings.
We would love that.
That number one, we can sell, but number two, we can use for landscaping at the backdrop of the high school.
And that'd be wonderful. And we all know that the project with the bridge is trying to culminate right around that time. So there's going to be a lot of stuff going on and we want, we want the kids to enjoy it, right? The high schoolers are going to see that bridge probably more than the rest of us on a daily basis for a long time. So we want it someplace they appreciate and we want them to buy it, right? Because that's their space and we understand that. I mean, it's all of our space, but they spend a lot of time there. So we want them bought in what's going on, so.
Yeah, appreciate the opportunity to partner with others in the community. It's important for us to be a part of a lot of things like that.
Well, we definitely want you there. Like I said, a huge part of that, having the kids involved and having everybody else involved, so appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping me in touch, guys.
Just a reminder, the Fall Northwest Division Meeting, I think you all should have received the emails about this, is on October second, six to eight PM at Winnebago High School. I will be driving up there, so I will have one car going. It is going to be a hybrid again, so you can go in person or you can go do it remotely via Zoom. So in-person registration is going to be due next month and I believe it's due before the board meeting. So if you are interested in attending in-person or via Zoom, will you please reach out to Erin? Or if you know right now you want to go, we can put you down. But I'd say in the next two weeks, get to her, check your calendars. Dr. Tony Sanders, the State Superintendent of Education is going to be talking, so it should be very interesting.
Is there a Q and A?
Usually there is, sometimes there's not, so. It'll depend on what other good financial news we have come out in the next month and a half.
Can I tell you now, Erin?
Yep.
Okay, I will do Zoom. I will do in-person.
I can take five, four, five uncomfortably, so you can let me know. I am just checking on the board member committee representatives. I know Mr. Fritz does board policy committee. Mrs. Gates does special ed and Desbo PRC. We have insurance committee with Mr. Rogers and that. Are you all CEC from Mr. Rodsworth, Mrs. Schaefer? Is everybody still fine with the committees that they're on for district committees? Is there anybody who says my schedule has changed, could someone take over blank? Because those meetings start within like the next two weeks, so.
We always ask this time of year.
Yep.
If anybody wants to trade or change or drop what they're doing. But continuity is nice too.
It is, you see the long term. So if something does come up in the next couple of weeks, just please reach out so then I can reach out via a newsletter to see if anybody needs to fill it in. Otherwise, I'll keep everybody on the same ones. And I sent you the updated calendars I know this week. So the biggest ones were Desbo PRC will start at three-thirty now with the later school day going on. And I think that is the biggest one, so thank you for serving on those. I received an email from IAS. I received an email from IASB, believe it or not. They're already on to who is going to be the delegate at the delegate assembly at the board conference in November. So I know a couple of you have done it and said it's a very interesting process to do it. Really lets you see the inner workings of how resolutions are passed and how school districts are adopting things. Is there anybody who says, who picked me this year and we can get you signed up?
Who the dates were?
November, week before Thanksgiving.
21, 22, 23?
Yep, 21, 22, 23.
So the delegation will be around the 22nd.
Saturday. Usually in the morning.
Saturday 12, yeah.
Morning, Saturday morning.
I am not interested.
Wait and be.
Just in case.
You should be interested.
Sign them up.
I thought I'd positively say that out loud. I know everybody else is interested. So you can fight among yourselves, just take the other.
We thought you would be such a good person.
I know, I know. It would be wonderful.
I think somebody should do it for the opportunity and the experience. But if not, I'd like to.
I'll check the calendar. I have no idea.
Okay, okay. And we don't, well, when did you say? We need to have it in in the next couple of weeks. So just, you know, Mr. Fritz, if you want to let me know and then we can, if not, we can.
I need to see anyway in the next couple of weeks.
Yep. All right. And finally, since our last board meeting, we have had one FOIA request. Sarah Barick from Sterling Federal Bank requested three months of our bank statements from Midland State Bank and we have complied with that request. Anything else before we head to executive session where there will be no action coming out of executive session? Personnel.
Personnel.
One thing, I'm sorry. Tonight, you will notice there's an extra person at our table. This is part of the cross-training process that we have. Vanessa Inkney is upstairs and she does a plethora of things for us. She is the face you see right when you come up the stairs. But she is being trained. So if Erin is ever sick or has something, we can have her come in and be the recording secretary for the board.
So is everybody okay with the personnel page decided now? I'll read the personnel page and then ask for a motion and a second to approve it. New hires, Matthew Payne, crossing guard at Jefferson School, effective August 13, 2025. Elizabeth Ratliff, paraprofessional at Dempsey Day School, effective August 18, 2025. Carissa Snelling, lunchroom attendant at Madison, effective August 13, 2025. Change of status, Megan Bus, from dean of students to assistant principal at Washington School, effective 2025, 26 school year. Resignations, Kendall Fassler, paraprofessional at Washington, effective August 14, 2025. Nicole Hoys, paraprofessional at Washington, effective August 7, 2025. Dismissals, Robert Collins, custodian at Dempsey Day School, effective August 20, 2025. And Carrie Goldie, paraprofessional at Washington School, effective same date. The following are Dixon High School coaches. All the following are for this 25, 26 school year. The following are assistant football coaches. Lake Jacobson, Tyler Madison, Brad Winterlin, Brandon Woodward, Kyle Lawrence, Luke Redlin, Cameron Gator, Matt Coffey. Cole Ruckman, assistant golf. Rick Kent, assistant girls tennis. Steve Carlson and Alyssa Kruger and Emily Bay, assistant volleyball. Ashley Almquist, marching band assistant. Ben Leitner, fall play director. Grace Wisworth, assistant fall play director. Karen Huger, lighting and sound. Jacob Bain, assistant boys soccer. Jack Heitz, head fall strength coach. Brandon Woodward, class officers. Dan Crawford, class officers. Jessica Anderson, math team. Michelle Valley, Dixine I yearbook. Michelle Valley, Dixonian newspaper. Erin Eddy, student council. Mercedes Maglio, band, non-musical. Abby Risner, vocal, non-musical. The following are RMS coaches, all for the 25, 26 school year. The following are volleyball. Cassie Bullock, Serena Vanir, Colton Doertie, Dan Randic. Evan Thor, cross-country. Maggie Love, assistant cross-country. Bridget Becker, RMS student council. Bridget Becker, RMS newspaper. Sarah Wilson, RMS yearbook. Ashley Almquist, RMS musical and choral. Ashley Almquist, RMS band. Chris Hanson, elementary band. And 25, 26 volunteer coaches. Jenna Halfaker, assistant Dixon High School cheer. Damon Batista, assistant RMS DHS boys cross-country. Aiden Johnson and Evan Thor, assistant DHS boys cross-country. Can I have a motion to approve and a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wisworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, student disciplinary cases, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal. Or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the findings shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mr. Wisworth?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.